Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the government of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have a number of meetings that we do not have meeting minutes for presently, so we'll defer those to a later date. The next item on the agenda is the possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. Now, we don't have a quorum here on these projects, so we're not going to be able to take a vote on an extension, but anyone who did put in an application for an extension, you're covered, you're safe. We do have, I believe, Hamiltonian Park Section F, somebody's here for that? If you have anything you'd like to add or say on the record for that application, we'd certainly be willing to hear that.
Basically, we had a hard time obtaining replacement for Lincoln Tully. We finally got one, and I've submitted his letter, his agooey, to the board, and that is the reason why we haven't been moving forward.
Okay. At this point now, it is proceeding?
Yes. Thank you.
That will be voted on at your next meeting.
Yeah, as I stated, yes, the next meeting we will have, hopefully, a full quorum and no one conflicted out of the project, so we will be able to take a vote on it. I know, that's why, without you, there would be three of us, you need a quorum, and a quorum's four.
Basically, I'm the one who's conflicted out, so.
Unfortunately, we had a number of board members that couldn't make it tonight for any number of reasons, so we brought up our alternates, and even there, here we are, okay. All in audio, we have somebody here for that? If you'd like to say anything about your project, or otherwise, again, two weeks we'll be voting on the extension.
Okay.
All right? And likewise for Alturis Solar and Pursuit Subdivision, those will become items on our next agenda. So the next item on our agenda presently is Solar Liberty Energy Systems eighteen dash one dash one point three. It's an application for a subdivision site plan and special permit for a solar energy system on fifty-eight point nine plus or minus acres along Milburn Road, Moonlight Trail and Storms Road in the RU zone, AQ three stream corridor and water supply watershed and Seaford corridor overlays. We're here to further discuss Part Three EAF comments that were made for the board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you just introduce yourself?
Yep, Dan Kreskowski with the law firm of Barclay Damon, here on behalf of Solar Liberty. I've been down here before, appreciate having been back here. So we submitted a supplemental submission in February, which I'm going to quickly go over, and then we've appreciated the iterative process of this board. So looking for feedback from you all as we move forward, I think we've resolved a lot of issues and submitted some things you all were looking for. So, you know, in this last submission, we had a number of things the board requested, soil survey, so that is in your materials in front of you. We're avoiding those silt loam soils, I know that was brought up with questions on the water table. We're relying on pile-driven galvanized steel, you'll also see within the submission, there's the pile load testing report. So from that report, that's what we decided, we did that, and then designed around that based on a thirty-year corrosive life from the galvanized steel. So I know that had been a question asked, so we'll have to provide that, and please feel free with any questions on anything.
Okay, while we're on that topic.
To jump in, yes.
On that topic, the rig that sets the post.
The pile driver, yes.
That's on track, right?
Yes.
Is there any issue with the soils as far as riding on the track there?
Don't believe so, I think we can, happy to provide something in writing to that effect, but.
As far as just disturbance?
Just due to the wet, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then kind of the largest part of the submission, there are a couple of parts of, some quicker ones are spec sheets, those were also requested. So we provided some examples of solar panels that we've used on other projects that show that, you know, these are PFOS-free, I think it's over the years, the solar industry has moved completely away from that, it's just, it's not used on panels, which you'll see in the sheets we provided, and when we decide.
You said you used them on other projects, would those be the same ones we'd be using on this project?
No, so, yeah, we'll provide the final, I think we've provided three examples in this submission, and when we do, those are the most commonly used, we'll provide the final, but it will not have PFOS, just to clear that up. And then we had been requested to have a noise study, which you'll find within here, and so we went out and performed that over the past few months, and as you'll see in those results, we're between thirty-nine to forty-four dBA at the project parcel boundary and at or below thirty-nine at residential receptors. So that's no more than a two dBA increase over current conditions. So according to DEC guidelines, zero to three dBA increase, there's no appreciable effect for a receptor. So I think that's, you know, you all have been asking for more detailed studies, we're happy with those results. And just for reference, a library is usually around thirty-four dBA, a quiet whisper from three feet, you know, something mead and eel or something like that, is around forty. So it's a low sound that you, at residential receptors, are not perceptible. And then I know we did receive Sean's comments via email this week on the glare study, we provided revised glare study per the board's recommendation. I think we had originally shown around twenty-five thousand plus minutes of yellow glare, we had a discussion on that. If you'll see in this study, we did add on the, all our panels have anti-glare reflective coating. So that brings us down to around twelve thousand eight hundred minutes of yellow glare. As to what that means, I know there were, you know, and we're happy to provide more narrative around this. Generally, glare, yellow glare is occurring when the sun is in line with the panels, so our panels are a fixed tilt array at twenty degrees. So when the sun is rising and setting and in line with the panels, that's when that would be experienced, those minutes you're seeing in the report. The glare effect on an individual is, and if you look, there's like a graph that's showing this, I'm doing poor job explaining it. It's less than if you're looking directly at the sun, if you're directly at the sun, you're squinting, you're seeing the sunset or sunrise. Yellow glare is below that in terms of what you're perceiving, because you'd be looking at the sun, that's a much stronger effect than the glare we're showing here. I think, you know, if I'm a lawyer, sadly, not an engineer, but with this Ford solar tool.
Not sadly, still.
You said sadly.
It's sad, engineer is a little more. Well, I'll speak for myself, not for you. You know, you can tinker around with this tool to add in obstructions, to add in vegetative rows, to add in topography, I think some of you are familiar with our site, we're dealing with topography here. The elimination of glare realistically is not going to happen due to the topography of the site, due to mainly this array up here, because we're measuring off Milburn Road here. But there is, we're maintaining this vegetative row, and we do have plantings here and here, which we'd highlighted in our last tree plan to you all. So again, happy to discuss that glare study to the degree you all have questions, I know Sean had to add some more specific questions, which, you know, we're happy to supplement in writing with more dialogue than I can provide. But that's kind of the sum of the submission we sent to you all in February, so again, happy to answer questions, to take feedback.
Thank you.
So the obstruction components that are newly in the glare study?
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't tell what those depict, what are they?
So you would be adding in like a, and Sean, just for jump in, if you were looking like from Milburn and there's this vegetative row, you can put in the tool, there's an eight-foot vegetative buffer. You can also put in, if there's a thirty-five foot tree, you would insert that, and if you, you know, if you're in line parallel a thirty-five foot tree, your glare is going to plump, obviously.
So based on what I'm hearing from the chairman, you're describing plantings that will be placed by the applicant?
So we're leaving this.
As the obstruction components?
I think, we're leaving this, there's a row here of plantings, we're not touching that, that will remain. We have, our plantings are here and on the corners, so those we would insert into the tool, that first one you saw with twenty-five thousand minutes, that did not take that into account. So that's, I think, where you're seeing this drop, along with the anti-reflective coating is really, that's what changes our numbers in this revised.
I, maybe I should just be specific.
Yeah.
On this page of obstruction components, there are the two corners, we think we're talking about as being the trees.
Yeah.
But there's also this long line.
That's the hedgerow, the existing hedgerow. That's along that road, that we've estimated at ten feet.
Okay, I don't think it's ten feet, I don't think it's an obstruction like in real life, but.
I mean, if you were on the road, I mean, I agree that, if you know, if you're above that, obviously that's not going to have no effect. But if you were driving by, that hedgerow is obstructing what you would receive off of those panels there. But again, due to the topography of the site, you know, that's this portion of the ray, if, from up here, which is higher, that row, you know, that's not going to change.
I'm just going to try to plow through this quickly, and I don't mean to be argumentative.
No, no.
I drove by it yesterday.
Yeah.
It is not an obstruction as it exists right now. The other issue that I'm concerned about with glare study is, when I drove by it yesterday, I could see a road called North Gate, which is further to the south, and I believe sort of in the direction that the glare would likely, or potentially go. It is further away than the current reference points that are in the glare study. But it's certainly within the radius that other applicants have measured for their glare studies. So I guess my concern with respect to the glare study is, why, you know, how did the applicant define the radius that it chose? And why those sites weren't included, because there does seem to be a direct line of sight from the project to that road.
Yeah, I can't speak to the engineering choice that was made, I know there were six observation points by road that were included in this submission that were put forth by this board that were included. I know we've looked at Alturi, for example, we saw their glare analysis, which included more visual. And I think, you know, with this past submission, we had our noise study, which happy to discuss as well. But that was after a back and forth, and then we went out and had a third party prepare the study. I think, as we've had back and forth on glare, we're happy to have another glare study to alleviate these concerns. What I would hope tonight is to have viewpoints you want, you know, obstructions you're looking for, like for example, this road, and I'm happy to take more notes on those inclusions, to kind of alleviate concerns over this, and happy to submit that to you all.
Okay, I'll wrap.
No, no.
I don't need to filibuster, but with respect to the glare study, I think you understand what I've said.
Yeah.
With respect to the visual impact, the, I think the suggestion when you left the last time was that we needed to see more, and I don't think we got back more. Typically, we see more renderings, and there, you know, this project is surrounded by roads with residential homes on them. Moonlight Trail looks directly into the site. And Storms Road, I don't, I assume, there's a lot of no trespassing stuff up there, but I assume that they look directly into the site as well. I, Milburn is not the only point of concern, I think, that we have. Typically, you know, the applicants give us a more fulsome portfolio.
Yeah.
When we say we need more.
No, I appreciate, and I think tonight I'm happy to take back, you know, points you want included at that.
Okay, well, that's, that's my feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
You said the vegetation along the road was approximately ten feet, what's the actual?
I don't have.
Yeah, I know you know, but it would be better to come up with, saying, hey, we estimated.
Six point eight, yeah.
If that really is an estimate or an average, then that's, that's one thing, but if it's just a wild guess, I don't really like to hear that answer. Then you described the glare as less than looking at the sun, I can get that much, is it less than looking at the lights or whatever, give me some kind of idea.
More reference points, yeah.
Something I know what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, because I don't have to look at the sun to get blinded by headlights at night.
Yeah, yeah, especially those.
Okay, so if you can come up with something there.
One of the things that you mentioned in some of the documentation with the landscaping is that if anything dies, it'll be a one-year look back.
Yeah, we offered that.
Well, what I'd like to see is not a one-year look back, I'd like to see, as was mentioned, more dense installation of vegetation right from the start. Not just wait for certain things to die, and, you know, planting things at ten-foot centers, you know, there's a way to put things, vegetation in stagger rows, so that they can still have that ten-foot center, maybe five foot behind, just, you know, stagger them or different types of shrubbery, so that the lower portions of the, because again, we're looking at panels that start three feet off grid and slope back to, I think, eight and a half feet, or give or take, you know, at the back end of the panel. So, I mean, we're looking through that vegetation, we're not looking over it until you're looking on the top of the hill, but even the nearer panels, we're looking close. You know, so where we put the vegetation around those two corners and some more fill on Milburn.
By fill, do you mean more, just more plantings?
More plantings, yeah, fill, not soil.
Yeah.
Plantings, but, you know, with that mix in mind as far as the conifers, you know, not just deciduous.
Right.
We have our year-round.
In our last planting, you know, in this kind of north array that we put, it was all, you know, per the calculations, natural plantings.
Yeah, but I would take a closer look, I think that needs to be extended, deepened, as far as.
By deepen, you mean probably Milburn?
Sean.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Your comments.
Sure, so just to kind of put this into where it is in the application timeline, so they had been before you last November. I had some written comments, this board had some comments, the applicant, and I appreciate the way they did this, they repeated the comments and they gave their response, makes it easy for tracking, make sure everything that was brought up gets addressed. So what they provided you is a supplement, so this builds on the other portions. I had comments on noise, I'd just like to say, I thought the noise study was very well done, it was appropriate for this, and they actually hit on the DEC criteria, which we've had some troubles with with other applicants, so I appreciate that. The glare study I do have some concern with, in terms of what you were provided was just a study, right? There's no context, there's no evaluation.
Interpretation.
Normally, or a lot of times, you get either, and this is a knock on attorneys, but you either get, you either get a written evaluation from their design professional who prepared the study, or they come to the meeting and they have a dialogue with you, that just hasn't happened yet, right? So we know there's twelve thousand minutes of glare, we know it's less than the sun, the same comment, right? There needs to be some sort of contextualization of what that means. In terms of the actual inputs in the study, I noticed that they studied the panels at a three-foot height. I'm not familiar with all the inputs on this program, but I understand that typically it's the centroid of the panel, these are sloped panels that, like you said, start three feet off. So that, in my mind, that panel height should have been higher than three feet. Again, if you had the design professional here that prepared it, again, not criticizing, but if you had that design professional here, maybe they could give you some insight as to why that would be input into the software. I can't give you any indication as to why that person chose that. The other was with the visual study, I had asked the board whether you're comfortable with it. The other item with the visual study is, again, I don't know who prepared the visual study, I don't know their qualifications or anything like that, what choices they picked in terms of study points and things like that, we just, we haven't received that information. So I did not have written comments, they're more just advisory comments this evening as to if we can get some more dialogue with the applicant.
If you're going to do the glare at three feet, then if we're looking at these panels, it seems like we should do the same glare study at eight feet, because that's the other end of the panel. So maybe both of them might help us out.
Well, I was looking through the, I keep mentioning Alturi, but, you know, there were numerous fords you can, I mean, I was even playing around, you can play around with your inputs on that.
Right.
And you can put different heights, you can put, you know, no, if there's no plantings, if there are plantings. So in this next submission, and I think we would retain a third party to do this revised glare analysis, provide that narrative, have some more. And again, if you have any other viewpoints besides one mentioned, you know, include that as well.
Just a comment by me, and I don't know if it's necessarily for the board, but I really think when we get to plantings, we should be putting in more robust plantings as far as height. I hate to look at the neighbors and say, well, halfway through the project's life cycle, you'll be able to not see it maybe, or you'll get the full effect. If we're looking at twenty years for the life cycle, wait ten years to have the effect of the plantings, we're always in benefit to the existing neighbors. I think we always should be looking at almost the impact at planting or at the time of the project. Anybody else, I'm going to jump to another subject unless somebody else has.
I have one more thing on the glare, and just because this is iterative, and I don't want to lose the fact that I think the board very negatively reacted to just the existence of yellow glare. Like that's, I've been asked to be corrected if I'm wrong, but that is not a feature of any solar project that we've approved, at least not in the recent past. I mean, there is, there is a bar, and I don't know if a yellow glare project can meet that bar.
I appreciate that, and to my understanding, I believe Alturi did have some yellow glare as well, it's not uncommon for solar rays, it does happen. I mean, red glare is definitely, that's, you know, damaging to your retinas. As for the yellow glare and what, and again, this new analysis will provide, you provide this narrative. You know, we're evaluating a significant adverse impact, as you all know, and if we're talking minutes of glare two months out of the year, does that rise to the level of a significant adverse impact? That's, again, I, without the numbers, can't speak to that, but I think in terms of framing that whole glare discussion, which we're happy to have, it's important to remember that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I looked at the graphs, and there are months where there, I believe, can be as much as sixty contiguous minutes of yellow glare for certain receptors, and I don't know what the law says about how to analyze that, I'm sure I'll ask at some point, but just sort of as a human being who was put in this chair, like, that feels like too much.
I appreciate that.
I think that's where the evaluation would come, so you did look at those graphs, did you recognize there was that one that had a tremendous amount, right? And there's a magnitude there, but then there were also some others that would have, you know, ten minutes at three o'clock in the afternoon for two months, kind of a thing. So what this would need is you need somebody to go through, hopefully the person who prepared the model, to go through and to address that for you. The other item I had was what you've done sometimes on tree lines, where you thought that they were not a real true obstruction, you've asked applicants to take those out of the glare study, so you could see what it would be like if it wasn't.
Worst case.
Worst case, and that's what you're evaluating, which is the impact.
I think for, in this case, the Milburn hedgerow, we could, you know, run one with nothing there, run one with that there.
One other item, this has nothing to do with any of the stuff that we just talked about, just when you're working on the plans again. Some of the correspondence you had as far as the pile driver.
Yeah.
In some locations, it said that the piles were going seven feet in the ground, other locations it said six feet.
Yeah, and I think in our.
That should be cleaned up.
Yeah, agreed.
And the same thing with the gap, the spacing underneath the agricultural fence, it's called out as different clearances for the rodents to run.
Eight inches is a standard.
Six inch, eight inch, I'm just, just to clean that up a little bit too.
Sean and I actually have a couple of those, so if you want to have a call, we can point some of them out to you.
That'd be great, yeah, and I think it could be helpful with this next submission to kind of have a, we've been before you a lot with a lot of revisions and submissions, kind of a, here's where we're at, here's our glare, here's just one, kind of like comprehensive, yeah, to have a better dialogue in this guy.
Gio, did you have anything? Not this time?
I have just one more thing, stormwater, I'm concerned about stormwater. Solar panels always go in one direction to catch the sun, and I understand that, and there's a total disregard about topography, we run up and down the hills and all that. And at least at my farm around my house, when I have a drip edge, the water comes off and it starts beating the soil at the bottom of there, where it is. So we're going to have, and all these panels are going to run from like eight foot down to the three foot, drop off on the ground, and start picking up soil, just the way it hits, that's just the nature of it. And then where it's running downhill, we're almost going to get, we're almost going to have a ditch at the bottom of each one of these rows of panels. And yet there's nothing at the bottom to do anything with the stormwater except to let it run off. Somehow I think you have to start doing something with that, I don't know whether you get it at the bottom, whether you put gravel underneath, or I don't know if we could put concrete underneath everywhere.
Yeah, I can take.
Gravel is what I got, might make sense, just to break up the power of the water running off.
I think we had one project before us in the past, that they did that, they put a trough of gravel, you know, below the. I think we had one project before us in the past that they did that. They put a trough of gravel, you know, below the drip line of each of the rows, the tiers of.
Especially when it's running up and down the hill. If it's running straight across the hill.
It just dissipates.
It's that, yeah. But where it's running downhill, and many of yours are.
Yeah, I think we can, we can, I can take that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in on that.
Yeah, sure.
The applicant is primarily here for the EAF, right? So they're trying to get through that EAF process. So something like that is usually picked up at site plant. I think it's good that they're aware of it now. They've given it on the plans and whatnot, given incorporated. It won't get forgotten. But, yeah, I just want the applicant to focus on.
Right, yeah, but by me, far as environmental concerns in the EAF, certainly if there's erosion or runoff, it's worthy of consideration.
Understood.
So I think the next step is your submission, and I'll get in touch with you. That way we can go over some of the minor things, but just so that the plans and the narratives.
Everything's aligned.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Does that sound good?
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
Don't listen to Shaun's knocks on attorneys.
I think you have to be right.
He does not. Don't tell him.
100%.
You guys better watch yourself.
Next item on the agenda is Chapter 80B, the Town Code Solid Waste Management Permit for IWS Transfer Station, Goshen Transfer Station. Are you here for that?
Yes.
Would you like to move forward, or do you have anything you want to tell us before we get started?
I don't.
By all means, if you have, back there, stay.
Listen, I think we covered it all multiple times, so.
Okay, then we'll proceed. Kelly.
So the board, if you recall, you had a prior cyclan special permit approval for the IWS transfer station. This, while related to that, is a different application. As part of your resolution, you said that the applicant needed to return to the town board if a Chapter 80B solid waste management facility permit was required. It was determined that it was required, so they are now before the town board for that permit. As part of that submission, once the application was determined to be complete, and as you know from your seeker review, similarly, complete doesn't always mean 100% accurate. It means they've met the level of submitting what needed to be submitted. So after a few iterations, it was determined by the town board to be complete. It gets referred to this board and it gets referred to the ERB. So I provided to you a memorandum which outlined what your responsibilities are under the code, and if you'd like, I'll just do it now. So in considering the application, the town board has to make sure that certain objectives are met, and some of those are specific to the planning board. One of them is that a harmonious relationship between the uses located in adjacent districts, as reflected in the comprehensive plan, as recommended by the planning board. The maximum safety of vehicular access and egress from the site to existing and prospective streets and highways, as recommended by the planning board. The maximum adequacy of interior circulation and parking facilities with particular attention to vehicular and pedestrian safety, as recommended by the planning board. And the adequacy of transitional landscaping and setbacks for achieving maximum compatibility and protection to adjacent property, as recommended by the planning board. So I think that those four items are really the items that this board should be focused on when you're considering what the referral was from the town board. And then the town board and the ERB would be weighing separately on their own concerns and their own elements of the Chapter 80B permit process. Do you want me to say anything else? That was pretty long-winded. Those attorneys are pretty great.
Sure. See, I've got comments, but I don't know if they apply or not. Hold on. Guys, go through them. You tell me if they're.
Yeah, why don't you go through them, and if they fall into one of those categories, I can just plug them in in my notes and you can.
I mean, some of these things are just, I guess, in the design itself, going back to that. We're talking about a 65,000 gallon water storage tank for fire protection.
That's right.
Was originally a 50,000 gallon, it's the same diameter, same location, same footprint.
Yes.
Correct?
Okay.
The water that's gonna fill that comes from where? Is that coming from the well, or are you bringing it?
This would be off-site.
It's coming from off-site?
Yeah.
I thought I saw something about the well.
There is an, there is an off-site well that's used for domestic water in the, in the office building.
But the, the tanks being filled by off-site?
Off-site, but it's just used for primary supply.
Okay, I understand that. Okay. No, we're changing the permit from 600 to 670 tons per day, eliminating the recyclables, which were 70 tons per day, I believe it was.
Right.
The recyclables now, where do they go? Are you bringing any in, where you have to move them, or are you just not picking them up? What's happening in that end of the business?
No, we, we picked them up. We built a state-of-the-art facility in North Arlington, New Jersey, so all of Orange County we hauled down.
So it's not passing through this facility at all?
Correct.
The recyclables?
Correct.
That would lead to my next question. If I'm reading the information right, we have 100, 588 tons of inbound tipping vehicles.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again?
588 tons, the inbound tonnage coming in.
588 tons.
Of inbound tipping vehicles, and outbound, we're saying there's 549.96. Why the difference?
Where are you, actually, where are you reading?
I am looking at page E2 of the cornerstone record, and it's the summary of outbound transfer trailers on average. And for January 2nd, 2024, I'm looking at those two numbers. And the prior page had the summary of inbound, and there were much higher numbers. But I don't know where that difference is going, but at the same time, we're saying that the permanent tonnage of traffic is 110 vehicles between inbound and outbound, and now we're going up to 158 vehicles inbound and outbound, because we're picking up more CND and
No.
garbage and not recyclables, but how did we suddenly pick up 48 more trips? Are they different sized vehicles or compared to recyclables?
Yeah.
I would look at that.
Yeah, I don't, definitely, yeah, without that, if I were you, I would have that right now.
Okay, because I mean, my only concern is that's 48 more vehicles pulling in and out of the entrance that aren't, weren't studied.
The number of vehicles doesn't change.
Then, then somebody's gotta take a look at that report, because it's very clearly saying there's 48 more. It says, as shown, there's an increase of 48 vehicles per day associated with the permit modification, or 96 trip ends. So it's definitely an increase, at least as far as your consultants say. So I'm, I'm just concerned about that as far as the traffic on and off of Hartley. As far as any of the waste that comes in, you say, you know, you basically mentioned it's checked. You know, it's looked over, make sure everything's okay, there's nothing dangerous, stuff like that. Did it check for like anything like radiologicals or anything like that?
Yes, we have.
You have sensors or detectors?
We have detectors at the scale.
Good, thank you. That's all I have. Gio? Chairman? Neil?
Yeah, I just, two, first, a couple of things, two things. I'm concerned about stormwater. A while back when you were here last time, we talked about stormwater and we, I don't know, we're here, ever resolved what happens to your stormwater. I don't think you have any stormwater ponds on site, so all the water runs off your blacktop. Where's it go? And how's it treated before it goes off-site? And I think that within the past five or 10 years, the EPA actually gave you a violation on runoff. That's, that's the first question I really have. And the second question is, I still am very uncomfortable with the intersection of Hartley Road and 17M, because not just your trucks, I realize, but yours are a large part of it. They can't make that right-hand turn. They have to walk the road by 10 to 12 feet sometimes. That's just a dangerous situation. And then to increase that by 50% or 100%, I think is creating a hazard that we should not. That should be resolved at some point before possibly the expansion.
I believe there was a letter sent to the town board about that issue, to reach out.
To the D O T?
Yeah.
About pulling the stop bar back?
Pulling it back.
Well, it's a stop bar back, but I, Shaun, I think we really, you need to look at it or, or the traffic consultant needs to go out and look at it. Because it's not just that they have to stop back further, it's that unless they're gonna stop back further, then go in the wrong lane to make the right-hand turn. But if you look at it right now, trucks are going eight, 10 to 12 feet off the side of the road.
Neil, I've been out there. I know it's a problem. The problem isn't that we think it's a problem. The problem is that the DOT needs to think it's a problem, and not just that, they need to take some action. So that's why, and that's usually the process, right? If this applicant, I don't know how far you could ask this applicant to off-site, I'm sorry, to mitigate off-site problems that exist outside of their application. But you did recommend that the town board consider, and I think that they did authorize submission of a letter. I think Kelly's looking it up now. And I don't know if there was any response received on it.
Can anything, I'm sorry, can anything be done at the end of Hartley on the town road to flare it out or to widen it for the swing?
I don't know if that would help. We can look at it, but keep in mind the DOT also has jurisdiction of that because you're entering their intersection. So if the town was to say, we'd like to add lanes there, we'd have to go through the process with the DOT. So it's not as simple as, well, your road starts there and ours starts here.
My concern, though, is that if we have a situation right now that is not particularly safe, why wouldn't we want to say, all right, let's double the unsafe condition? By increasing traffic by double or 50%, whatever the number is. I just think that we're, we're setting ourselves up for a more hazardous situation by increasing the frequency of that concern.
I, I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to understand, and perhaps Kelly can weigh in on this. There's a line of where you can ask an applicant.
I agree with you, and, and I know that there's been, come on, how many after great lawsuits was what, Ramapo?
There's a lot of great lawsuits.
Where, where, where essentially it was said, you can't, you can't increase or you can't build this until we get around to making the improvement. And then you have to have a plan to make the improvement. I'm not saying we have that at this point, but I'm, I'm saying maybe we need to, or maybe, all right, until we get it resolved with the DOT, we shouldn't increase from what's currently permitted by the town up to a 3 and S to be permitted.
Well, I mean, that's something that can certainly go in the town's report as it relates to vehicular access and egress from the site to existing and prospective streets and highways. Other than that, the planning board is just making a report to the town board. And again, it's up to the town board, who is completing seeker as well, to consider any traffic impacts. And maybe they'll reach out to the DOT and, or maybe the DOT will respond, but there is a limitation to off-site improvements that can be made, but without having all of that information.
But I think, I think it's a great opportunity for a three-way cooperation here. I think the town, the state, and the applicant could all work this out somehow. It's not a tremendous amount of material it's gonna take to do this. I realize getting an application to the DOT might be the biggest issue with this.
Biggest issue is getting a response, yeah.
Right.
I know the town board did authorize a letter. I presume the letter went out and I had not received any response. I think that was months ago. And this is a problem that's limited to Goshen. This happens in a lot of jurisdictions throughout.
Even the time period.
Well, getting, getting the state to invest in improvements.
However, if we were to offer, and maybe I think it's the town, because the town also is, I think, got a bunch of money to do this. And some of the investment of that money may go to this improvement, which benefit the applicant and everybody else, and make it a whole bunch safer.
I don't know any money. Do you, do you know specifically what money? Was it grant?
I think you paid $200,000 lately.
Oh, they paid $200,000, but that's in accordance with a
I know.
host community benefit agreement, and that is specific for parkland fees.
Okay, it's a parkland fee we got?
It's, I'm sorry, it's not for parkland fees. It's specifically was earmarked to go to parkland.
That was, that's a legitimate thing. I would have thought it would have gone.
That was from things that had been supposed to be paid, but were not paid, but the applicant came.
I didn't realize that had any earmark for parkland. I would have thought it was community benefit, in which case the community would have benefited by this intersection being better.
You are, like Kelly said, you are preparing a report, right, to the town board. You can incorporate that into the town board, if the board is unsure that that money's already been allocated.
Then we can use the next bunch.
Kelly, to be clear, this permit that we're looking at now, is that for continued operation? Or is it for going from 600 to 670, changing the?
That's what they are requesting. So they're requesting continue their operations and increase by that amount.
Well, I mean, if it wasn't increased, we're still looking at the same permit for the existing 600, correct?
The, oh, because that one may or may not have left? What are you talking?
Well, well, meaning, we're not just looking at an expansion?
No, you're looking at the whole thing.
The operation, the whole, existing, even without what they're asking for?
Yes.
Lee, I know you probably haven't read all of the 80B permit, but I've gone through it a couple of times, and there's two permits actually embedded in the solid waste management permit. One is the construction and the other is operation. And that's what the town board's considering. So even if the applicant had no change in their operations, the construction of these improvements would trigger probably a new 80B permit.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. If they weren't going for the expansion, the construction, would we be sitting here?
Yes, if they're looking to change the operational parameters of the facility. Either they change the operational parameters.
The parameters as in what we approved as a planning board?
No, in terms of their throughput.
Right. Well, that's what I was asking, if they weren't asking for that.
If they weren't asking for that?
I mean, if we were just adding it to six times, we're not changing it, are we here?
Well, I guess, what we're trying to do, right, because we have, we're permitted to take in 600 tons of MSW and CND.
Right.
And 70 tons of recycle.
Correct.
Okay, so those trucks come in now, right? So all we want to do is change the 70 tons because we built a state-of-the-art facility.
Well, I understand that. Yeah, that's right. That's kind of what led to my last comments early on.
I'm just confused.
As far as the extra traffic, but I'm saying.
Yeah.
But if.
There shouldn't be an extra, that's what I'm saying.
Well, hopefully your consultants will clean up, so it'll be clear. But if you were bringing in the 600 and gave up the 70 that's going to Arlington, New Jersey, would we be here?
Yes.
We'd still be here, that's all.
Yeah, because of the construction expansion.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to say that I misspoke, so what it actually says is that the host community benefit payment to the town may be used by the town for any municipal purpose related to recreation, parks, and parkland and general fund B within the town. So I just wanted to say I misspoke.
I have one more question since they're answering questions. I sent an email before I realized that you would be coming back to the board about truck traffic, weight-restricted roads. The, the, the drivers that are coming to the transfer station that are not on a route, are those drivers directed by software that you control? Or do they sort of have autonomy as to how to get to your place?
They're directed by software for routing. So to get to the transfer station, obviously, we have software that logistically routes those trucks based off of pickup volume density and that type of thing. There is, you know, as far as, as far as them taking, you know, the route, there is a direct route that is initiated with those programs, yes.
Because I, I wonder, since we're, we're providing some advisory comments to the town board, if, if we, if there is a way to blacklist somehow the weight-restricted roads that lead to your facility on your software, I, I appreciate it may not, that may eliminate some of the shortest routes, but
Yes.
That, I, I think that that would be helpful and consistent with.
Yeah, absolutely, and we instruct all of our drivers to stay off of weight-restricted roads, you know, unless.
Unless you're picking them up.
Unless we're picking up, right, we have to be on those roads to pick up stuffs.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
The, the largest percentage of the trucks coming in and out of there are your trucks, I think, right? I mean, I, I'm not sure it's not even 100%.
That, that, you're correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I mean, they have total control over the drivers.
Yeah.
So what I would need from you is, before we make the motion, but a motion to authorize the drafting of a report, so I can include this and include the comments that were made tonight. I'll include some of the items that I had set out for you so that all of four items are addressed in your report, and I'd like to pass it by Lee before I send it out, if that's okay, just to make sure, right?
When does, when do we have to respond by?
We've got 45 days.
So there's 45 days, but. So there's 45 days, but the entire time period for the application to proceed under chapter 80B is very short. So the sooner that you get your report to the town board, which is limited to these four items, the better, really.
I was just gonna say, since we have so many people missing tonight, I'd love to give them an opportunity at the next meeting, two weeks from now, whatever.
I defer to this board, but the ERB will also be weighing in. Or I can prepare the report, and then the board could consider that.
Modify if necessary.
Yeah. Sean will kill me because I think I just added it to the other.
Rather than just leaving it on you, we had just, sooner have the other missing people.
So we just still have the motion to draft a, a letter. Could I have a motion then to have council draft a letter to the town board reflecting the comments and concerns that we've made this evening, as well as other comments that were picked up prior to?
I'll make the motion.
Jeremy, second by?
Hey, Jeremy.
I'll second it. Giovanni, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Seems he does when he's not pressured.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
8:00 AM.
Oh, 9:00 o'clock, sleeping. Okay. Anything else? On this particular application, that's all we can do tonight.
That's all you can do tonight.
I would thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Helping us out.
Appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Before we pass on to Sean, do we have any comments from the board? If not, we have a meeting coming up on the 20th, what do we have from March 20th?
Uh, you have three applications right now, new application, Levka Warehouse. Uh, it is not a warehouse in the town, it's a warehouse in Florida, but it will be modifying, uh, an access road in the town, it's over by the Mulrath property.
Okay.
New application, Mulchmore, uh, that is Mr. Adamas's facility.
Is that in the same, uh, location?
Yes, it's the one out of 17M.
The one with the ski slopes?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
New application, he said, it is a new application, I haven't seen it yet. Uh, student bus is returning with revised plans, and, uh, an oldie but a goodie, Primrose Realty Golden State Hotel, it's coming back with an EAF.
And now IWS.
And IWS also, thank you. Which is Golden State? It's a hotel, uh, of 17M, uh, it's kind of in a, if there's no.
That's that boutique hotel, uh, next door to, uh.
I think it's gonna be next to us, Lucas Spence area.
Lucas Spence area, yes, it's the second one away from the intersection.
Where the architecturals didn't have doors.
Yes.
They handicapped us like a little second.
Yeah. Which for those listening, I believe they have fixed, they wrote good comments from the board.
Okay, so Levka, Mulchmore, Student Bus, Golden State, otherwise known as Primrose, and IWS.
That's it.
Okay.
And all of the extensions.
Right, the four extensions. Are there gonna be any more than that, perhaps? Okay, should I hold on to those writers, do you want them back?
No, you can hold on to them, I have copies, thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else from the board, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
It's a move.
Giovanni, second by?
Jeremy got it.
I'll just give it to Jeremy. All in favor, say aye. Against? Have a good night.
He did all of that without.